Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Thursday, April 14, 2022, relative to the proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. Will the clerk or the clerk's office please read the subject of the hearing?
Today's public hearing will be on the proposed Wilkinsburg Borough annexation by the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much. And for the record, I am your chair tonight, Reverend Ricky Burgess. We are joined by the president of council, Teresa Kell Smith, and we are also joined by the Honorable Erica Strasburger. And so our first order of business will be a presentation. But before I say the presentation, I said this at the end of the first meeting, I think maybe tonight I'll say it at the beginning of the meeting. Members of city council are not involved at all in the processing of the annexation of Wilkinsburg. It is not our desire to initiate a process. It is not our desire to be the arbiter of the process. There was nothing that we're doing to actively lead this process. This process is 100% led by the Wilkinsburg voters. It has...
No!
Can I finish, please? There are three parts to this. There are three parts to this. First of all, 5% of registered voters in Wilkinsburg must provide a petition to the Court of Common Pleas. That is not something we initiate. That's something that Wilkinsburg voters have to initiate. Following that 5% voting, that will go to a judge. If the judge declares that those voters are legitimate who have signed the petition, then we will be ordered by the court to make a decision, one we do not initiate. The judge will then ask the city council to make a decision as to whether or not the voters of Wilkinsburg again, as a total, can vote on annexation. So first, it's initiated by the voters of Wilkinsburg. Our role will be to say yes or no. This happened once before, so we said no because we didn't have enough information. And then even if we say yes, it goes back to the voters of Wilkinsburg to make a final determination. And the majority of voters in Wilkinsburg had to vote yes. And then the following January, after that vote, then Wilkinsburg would be automatically annexed as the next community of the City of Pittsburgh. And so our role is passive in the effect of, we do not initiate it. It is brought to us only if 5% of Wilkinsburg voters asked us, then we will make a decision. But our decision is not binding on whether or not there's annexation. It goes back to Wilkinsburg voters. So I want to be very clear from the very beginning, from both the beginning of the process and at the end of the process, the decision will be made by the voters of Wilkinsburg. Now, I want to start off with a short presentation to give an overview. And again, this is not for or against, but just the same overview that we will present at all the public hearings. Our chair, Councilman Lavelle, is on Easter break with his family, and so I am filling in. The Pittsburgh reason is unusually decentralized. With hundreds of independent municipalities, Wilkinsburg is small. It's only 1/20th of the size of Pittsburgh. There are 130 municipalities in Allegheny County, the most of any city. And so Wilkinsburg and Pittsburgh, in many ways, have already successfully combined several functions over the last 15 years. So we are already in some ways connected to the borough of Wilkinsburg. First of all, our garbage collection. We started in 2006. Wilkinsburg contracted with the City of Pittsburgh Sanitation Department. And right now, every week or every day, we pick up garbage from the City of Wilkinsburg. Second of all, fire protection. There was in 2011, the full integration of Wilkinsburg Fire Department into Pittsburgh's Fire Department. So we take the garbage, we also do all of the fire protection for the borough. And then finally, the public schools. There was a consolidation of Wilkinsburg Middle and High Schools into the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So all of the middle school students, middle school students and the high school students also go to Pittsburgh Public Schools. The only thing that remains in Wilkinsburg's control is their grade schools. And if consolidation happened, obviously, their grade schools would be merged with the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And so what was the result of all that? Well, in terms of the fire consolidation in 2011, the fire departments are able to spend per capita and per acre less money to protect the new neighborhoods in Wilkinsburg. It has an expanded coverage and faster result time. All Wilkinsburg firefighters were often offered positions with Pittsburgh Fire Department, so there were no layoffs. And so you have an increase in efficiency and in service and in response time with no reduction in jobs. The Wilkinsburg Garbage Collection Contract 2006 cost efficiently. Wilkinsburg was already contracting with Waste Management, a Houston-based private waste collection company, before contracting with Pittsburgh. The contract with Pittsburgh has provided Wilkinsburg with roughly $680,000 of savings annually compared to the cost of contracting with Waste Management. The service, individual property owners are still responsible for waste removal for multifamily and commercial buildings, while Pittsburgh's DPW took over waste removal for single-family homes and small apartments. Pittsburgh itself has a history of merging services with nearby municipalities, including Ingram, Mah Oliver, and Millville, so this is not new to us. Ingram Fire Department in 2015, I was a member of council then, Pittsburgh City Council voted unanimously to provide firefight services to Ingram. Mah Oliver Schools, Mah Oliver and Pittsburgh share a school board. The municipality also contracts EMS services with the city, following Millville Water and Sewer. Pittsburgh's takeover of Millville's water system allowed for the funding of system upgrades and repairs. By taking over the water systems, we were able to give them better services. Wilkinsburg and its school district face structural economic challenges. Loss of 4,100 residents since 2020. Steadily declining tax basis. Steadily declining tax base. And 4.8% property rate compared to 2.3 for Pittsburgh. So the property taxes are double for Wilkinsburg homeowners compared to the owners of Pittsburgh's. These structural challenges will limit the borough and the school district's ability to invest in improved services. Underlying property tax revenue will remain stagnant without tax growth.
Land grab. Can everybody please keep their phone up until after work late? We never have to remove.
Where's the west? Where's the removal boy? I'm allowed to speak.
They can't arrest him.
Why?
Because he's speaking.
Okay, well, I'm allowed to speak. Please, just speak, sir.
He can speak. It's in the future.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, but I'm allowed to speak. Land grab. But go ahead.
Where's the printout?
I don't know if we have extra copies of the printout. You can ask the clerk in the back. They should be over on the table. Thank you very much. Underlying property tax revenue will remain stagnant without tax-based growth or increased tax rates. Earned income tax revenue is susceptible to economic cycles. Expenditures, rising costs, including high overtime costs due to lack of manpower, aging infrastructure. And so I think, no matter what, objectively, Wilkinsburg will face some challenges in the future. I'm not saying they cannot overcome them, but those challenges are undeniable. Without a merger, Wilkinsburg will experience a growing deficit as personal costs outpace revenue, high property taxes, and poor service constrain tax growth. And so it is projected that you will have, the borough will have a deficit of $0.8 million in 2028, and the school district will also have a $2.2 million deficit. As has been told to us sometime around 2008, 2028, or even probably before that, it has been told to us that the city, again, I know you have dueling financials, but the financials that have been sort of shared with us is that Wilkinsburg in the next half a decade or the next five to seven years will be bankrupt. Now, let me tell you, so let me tell you the process. Let me remind you the process. At the end, sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, everybody here will be afforded the opportunity to speak. The presentation by city council, please let them proceed with their presentation. If you have something to say, I suggest you write it down, jot it down, and you're given the opportunity to speak. Please bring that point up to city council. Is this the presentation that they'd like to get through, or please if you could, I think they're going to do the presentation. Mark, can you speak? What do you have to talk about? I mean, talk about Dan. Is that fair, councilman?
Correct. Everybody will get a chance to speak, and I will not talk when you talk. And I prefer, if you would be polite enough, if you're able, to not talk when I'm talking. Now, the last page talks about the process of how this will occur or not occur. First of all, I'm assuming that there will be, the Wilkinsburg CDC and other advocates will once again try to gather 5% signatures. And if they are able to receive that threshold, they will take that 5% of signatures of Wilkinsburg voters, they will present it to the Allegheny Court of Common Pleas. If they have valid signatures, the court will have no choice given the state law. It is not optional. The judge does not have a say-so. The only thing the judge will decide is whether or not the signatures are valid or not. Once they receive the 5% threshold of signatures, of property signatures, then it is by order referred to city council for an up or down vote. We absolutely cannot take no action. We're not allowed to. The court will demand that we vote yes or we vote no. We are demanded by the court to make a vote. All right? So if we vote no, which we did before, and I was one of the no votes, I was one of the no votes for a variety of reasons, but I was a no vote. And if we say no, then there's no further action. If we say yes, then it will go to the voters of Wilkinsburg. And the voters will have an opportunity to vote. If the majority of them say yes, then in the following January of the vote, whenever the vote occurs, in that following January, you will be, the Wilkinsburg would be annexed by the city. But as soon as a yes vote happens, then the Wilkinsburg officials and the Pittsburgh officials would work to annex so that there's no disruption in school services or any other in, you know, in public works, snow removal, all that sort of stuff. Now, that's the facts as we have been, and I know there are other opinions. That is the facts as we know it. And so the process now is for us to listen to you. After we listen to you, at the end, council members will say a few words. Now, we will start off with our registered speakers. And so I'm going to call, what I prefer you to do is when I call, I'll call like two at a time. And so as I call two at a time, the first one would come to the mic and second one would sit at the chair, and then I'll call two, and the other one goes to the mic, the next one comes to the chair. It's the fastest way to get this done. Now, this is being recorded. It will be replayed on our city's channel. It will be replayed on our YouTube channel. All right? I need to borrow this. And so I will announce the registered speakers, but if you're not a registered speaker, that's okay. At the end of the registered speakers, everybody here will get a chance to speak, and we are roughly given three minutes to speak. And so we have David Farkis followed by Bernie Wetzel. David, are you here? David, if you're not here, I know Bernie's here. Bernie Wetzel followed by David Tessitore. Tessitore.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bernie Wetzel. My family has lived in Wilkinsburg since 1937. I graduated from Wilkinsburg High School, as did my sister and brother. And for the seven years ending this past June, I was president of the Board of the Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation. And we did a series of studies, initiated studies that were conducted by H.R. and A. This is the same firm that guided the city out of Act 47. And, oh, that was PFM. So in their analysis, they concluded, along with the Department of Finance in Pittsburgh, Michael Lamb, the city comptroller, that this would be a boon, a positive financial benefit to the city and to Wilkinsburg. In fact, if that annexation takes place, $10 million would be directly deposited into the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And our analysis and the analysis of many others says that it would be positive $1 million each year. Now, to Pittsburgh from Wilkinsburg. Now, one of the things that I would ask you to do as you listen to all the speakers, what are the facts that support their arguments? In Wilkinsburg, we're losing 20%, we lost 10% of our population, including 21% of our black population. We continue to have vacant, more and more vacant houses, and more and more businesses exit the borough. And I know many people personally, and those who we've asked who have left Wilkinsburg, the reason is high property taxes. And in fact, we tried to attract low-to-moderate-income housing projects. And what the developers of, whose niche is developing low- and moderate-income housing, told us was that the taxes in Wilkinsburg make these projects impossible to finance. So I would ask all of you to look at the facts. We put together a website that outlines those facts, and would urge you to speak factually about your position. If you don't agree, and many of you don't, with annexation, give us specific reasons and facts that support your argument.
Thank you very much. That brings us to David Tessitore followed by Rose Hammond. So if you could get on, if Rose, if you're here, get to the on-base seat.
Good evening. The fact that Wilkinsburg is benefiting now from arrangements should be alleviating a lot of the financial problems. I do realize I have people that I know who are in Wilkinsburg, and the tax burden is purely the reason behind pushing for this. In other words, they're asking the City of Pittsburgh to take the liability of their situation and put that on city residents. But the city has neighborhoods that need attention that aren't getting it. I happen to know that in Sheridan, you have Beltsuver, you have Allentown, Arlington, Northview Heights, you have a number of neighborhoods that need attention as bad or more worse than Wilkinsburg as far as needing to be rejuvenated. Turning it over to the URA isn't going to help Wilkinsburg with their scorched earth renewal process where they assemble large blocks of land, and I did hear somebody saying land grab, that they then turn over to real estate speculators with huge subsidies. We've seen this throughout the City of Pittsburgh to put in 30-year design life cookie-cutter buildings. Whereas Wilkinsburg has had a long history with the Pittsburgh History and Landmarks, which have done some excellent things, their programs need to be expanded. And the way to do that is for those who are having problems in Wilkinsburg to band together and put pressure on Allegheny County to set up a municipal program for distressed municipalities. Wilkinsburg is not the only distressed municipality out of 130. County has been the one that has been remiss in doing anything on this, and I would hope city council would get behind pushing for that and encourage the residents of Wilkinsburg to organize and push county on that. Also, I would hope that in the past, that the City of Pittsburgh would have a vote on it as residents, as a referendum, but if that's not in the legislation, maybe it should be. Allegheny County also should be looking at some things to help the City of Pittsburgh with a rail connection to the airport instead of trying to go to the east with Wilkinsburg. That's one of the things that has been very much setting Pittsburgh back compared to other communities around the country. But anyhow, there are ways to do a program for neighborhood revitalization instead of the large program where individual units could be focused on with contracts that go out through an organized program to individuals who live in the community, keeping that money in the community. The scorched earth renewal process brings in out-of-state contractors. A lot of times, the money leaves the community, and you're left with what you've got. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Rose Hammond followed by Renee Dauney. Ms. Hammond, are you here? Haven't you, not seen you here. We have Renee Dauney followed by Kate Luxenberg. Renee, are you here?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Renee Dauney. Hello, Council President Kell Smith. Hello, Councilmember Strasburger and Reverend Burgess. It feels like I know you guys well because I keep seeing you because we keep doing this. I'm a longtime resident of Wilkinsburg, and I'm asking you to vote no if this does hit your desk again. I want to be really clear that you keep stressing that this is resident-driven, but it's not. As you say, it's 5% of the residents. That's a really, really small slice of the people in Wilkinsburg. If you put this on the ballot, it's going to fail. There is one driver and one driver only of this, and that's the Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation. And they were founded by bankers. The banker who founded them lives in Fox Chapel. So this is not a grassroots organization by any stretch of the imagination. You've talked about the fact that we have some shared services with the City of Pittsburgh, and I think that we need to be clear that there's quite a difference between sharing services and political independence. And where it makes sense, we are happy to contract out with other organizations to save money for our services, but we want to maintain and retain our political independence. The statistics, this is the second time that you've given us that presentation, which comes directly from the WCDC. It was done by an outside, you know, out of the region agency, some consultant that was paid hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to come up with a conclusion that they came up with. And I'm going to ask right now, has anybody talked to our finance director? So these numbers don't actually come from the borough's actual numbers, right? So may I ask that before, the next time before we have another meeting, will you please, and I'll reach out to you and put you in touch with our finance directors so that you can get the actual numbers? Because these are just made-up numbers that a consultant came up with because they were given hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the last time in the West End, you said Reverend Burgess. What I'd like to know, what I'd like to hear is what is the plan for Wilkinsburg? Oh, poor little Wilkinsburg. If Pittsburgh doesn't take it over, what's going to happen to Wilkinsburg? And I printed this from the Post Gazette. This is your district. This is Homewood-Lammer. It shows that 25.4% of the total parcels in Homewood-Lammer are owned by the City of Pittsburgh, and they're blighted, and they're vacant, and they have code violations. We don't want this. This is not the Wilkinsburg story. We have blight, but it's not like this. And we don't, we don't see how you can make the argument that coming into Wilkinsburg is going to save us. You can't save the sections you have. If Councilman Lavelle was here, I was going to show him his district. And this again is from the Post Gazette, their July exposé on blight in Pittsburgh. And this shows that, for anybody who can't see it, 27.9% of the parcels in Perry South and California Kirkbride are owned by the City of Pittsburgh. So I don't under, and I get it, right, that you guys aren't driving this. But there's, just vote no. You don't even need to waste any more time on this. You can't handle what you have. Just vote no. Thank you. Thank you.
So we have Kate Luxenberg followed by Jody Guy. Kate, are you with us? Thank you very much.
Kate Luxenberg. I've lived in Wilkinsburg for longer than most of people in this room have been alive, but I wasn't born in Wilkinsburg. What?
It's working.
Is it working? It's working?
The mic is working. The mic is, there's no, we're recording this to livestream it. There is no speakers, so you're not hearing anything in the room, but we need you to speak in the mic so that when we broadcast, you'll be able to be heard on television.
Okay, here I am. I am very disappointed that you are using this presentation that did come from the WCDC, was not created by any department in the City of Pittsburgh. And it took me a while to find out where to get it. I called Councilmember Lavelle's office, and it's, I'm used to, in Wilkinsburg, just calling up the people who are on our council. They answer the phone right away, and it's very, very village-like, and that's what I like. Well, the people in Lavelle's office were very polite to me, and they sent me this. And I saw that, in fact, it was produced by the WCDC. And it has falsehoods in it. When I interrupted you, I didn't interrupt you when I just disagreed with your opinion. I interrupted when you actually stated something false, F-A-L-S-E, false. Steadily declining tax base is in this presentation. That is absolutely not true. If there is one accepted measure of what our tax base is, it is the total assessed value as published by the County Assessment Office. I don't know what other measure you would use. It has gone up steadily since year 2017. In 2017, it was $407.4 million, $407.400 million. In now, 2022, it is $434.600 million, up every single year since year 2017. So please do not circulate this false presentation anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have Jody Guy followed by Renee Haynes-Johnson. Jody, are you with us? Thank you very much.
Good evening. How are you? I'm Jody Guy. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. I'm a longtime resident in Wilkinsburg. My family settled there in 1919. I grew up there, and I now own a business in Wilkinsburg. I also spent 20 years with Pittsburgh Public Schools. First as a teacher, and then as a curriculum specialist, and then as an administrator. And I'm here to ask you to fill out the rest of this report, particularly around education, because there's so much more to the school issue than simply expenditures and revenues. There is nothing in this report about education, or the children, or the families. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a good deal of research out there that hundreds of studies have found that students who attend small schools outperform those in large schools on every academic measure, from grades to test scores. So I know from just a little bit of research on my own that, for instance, class sizes, teacher-to-student ratios are nine students to two teachers in Wilkinsburg. And at Faison, for instance, here in Homewood, there are nine students to one teacher. But what has happened is the test scores. There's a nine-point difference between the test scores. If you look at reading scores in Wilkinsburg, it's 32% at a proficient level. And if you look at Faison, the reading scores are 23%. Or if you look at math, the scores in Wilkinsburg are 22% at a proficient level, and at Faison, 13%. If you look at bullying, PPS has 32 reports of bullying per 100 students, but the statewide average is 1.9 incidents per 100 students. It's quite a difference. Dropout rates. Four Pittsburgh high schools increased their graduation rates, but the rates decreased at five high schools. And one of them, Pittsburgh Westinghouse, had a graduation rate of 66%, the lowest in the district. So there are a lot more information that could be in this report. I'm also concerned that Turner, for instance, one of the elementary schools in Wilkinsburg, was recently totally remodeled. And now I was speaking to the Wilkinsburg superintendent, and he let us know that Kelly, the other... the other public school, is also about to undergo renovations. So the fact that we, Wilkinsburg cannot handle or offer services that are appropriate to good education, it's just a fallacy. Turner School is also a Spanish magnet and has great teachers. I hope you'll do more to fill out.
Thank you very much. We have Renee Haynes-Johnson followed by Patricia Lewis.
I'm going to read fast. I'm going to talk loud. Good evening, everyone. My name is Renee Haynes-Johnson. I went to Baxter, Belmar, and Westinghouse back in the day. But I've lived in Wilkinsburg for the last 37 years. I'm here to share with you about a mishap Wilkinsburg is undergoing. Last November, a sinister Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation forced city council to vote on annexing Wilkinsburg, basically saying, hey, Pittsburgh, we're willing to give you Wilkinsburg if you want her. We made a lot of assertions to the people that this is a good thing. So back in January of this year, Councilman Burgess put a pause on that and spoke about courting Wilkinsburg and not being forced into a shotgun wedding. He said he wanted to court Wilkinsburg. Then he turned around in March and designed a way to examine not only Wilkinsburg, but other municipalities for possible annexation. In this examination, Wilkinsburg was stripped naked before city council, like a slave on an auction block, to see how she would benefit Pittsburgh's prosperity. Between January and this, and March of this year, Burgess went from wanting to court Wilkinsburg to drooling at the mouth, rubbing his hands in lustful eagerness, declaring that in one year from this time, he would vote yes to annexing Wilkinsburg. If the council votes yes on this, Wilkinsburg and her school district will be forced to vote on giving up her independence. I personally would not say yes to someone who courted me in this way. Here's the real deal. Pittsburgh needs the population in Wilkinsburg to offset Pittsburgh's declining population to remain eligible for federal redevelopment money. We already know what redevelopment did in East Liberty and is now doing in Lincoln-Larmer and sections of Homewood. People who were displaced in East Liberty are still trying to recover from that, and now the same thing is happening as it moves further east. Where are people supposed to go? The waiting lists for affordable housing are years long. If annexation happens and developers run bakery square-type businesses and housing up through Penn Avenue in Wilkinsburg just to satisfy the Googleites and such who want to move there. In the words of Pittsburgh Councilman Kraus, Wilkinsburg will become Bakery Square 2.0. Taking it further, I say that Wilkinsburg, the rest of Wilkinsburg, will become Homewood East. Supposedly, we're told, the city would reduce the blight in Wilkinsburg. I ask you, Homewood, what have they done for you lately? Pittsburgh can't handle its own blight, but it does know how to gentrify. You're here tonight as part of the game city council must play in order to complete their process and take this to a vote. None of you has a vote in this situation unless you live in Wilkinsburg. But Pittsburgh, you do have a vote on who represents you in council. Pray for Wilkinsburg. We're praying for you.
So I believe that was Renee, right? Yes, and so that, Renee Haynes-Johnson, right? So that's, I'm just making sure my order's right. So we have Patricia Lewis followed by Carmen Brown.
I'm Patricia Lewis, and I've lived in Wilkinsburg my whole life. And so I've seen the decline. I know what you're saying. It has decreased. The biggest controversy was somewhere in the 80s, something happened to schools. But we who remain are real, work real hard to keep things going. And so I was listening to your report, Pastor Burgess, and I just wondered, what would you do for Wilkinsburg? Because right now, I go to most of the meetings with the council, you know, with the blight committee, the financial committee, et cetera. They seem, you know, they seem to be trying to keep Wilkinsburg afloat. What would the city of Pittsburgh do for the residents if, in fact, we had a merger? I don't understand, because, you know, unfortunately, you know, there is a lot of houses to come down and a lot of buildings, you know, to come up. So I was wondering, you know, what could you tell the audience what the council would do if we merged? Thank you.
Thank you. We have Carmen Brown followed by Walt Crumble.
Hello, everybody. So I'm a, I am a city of Pittsburgh resident, and I'm definitely against the annexing. And let me explain a little bit about the type of person that I am. I'm an activist, and I've been fighting a lot of the gentrification that's been going on in East Liberty, Homewood, and, well, Larmer. And I want to say this is that, first of all, let's talk about all the violence that's going on. I had a son who was murdered in 2014, and still have not, they have not solved any of these crimes. Now we see that there's a lot of violence soaring. So my question is, is that how is it that you want to, you know, even consider courting Wilkinsburg for annexing when you can't even handle what's going on right now? Because every time you look at the news, people are dying, you don't know who did it. The police officers, right now, you're going to be losing a whole lot of police officers from what I'm hearing. So this is what, I don't understand why is it that you want Wilkinsburg when, again, you can't even take care of your own, you know, your own house, your own back door, your back, your backyard? So again, I just don't think that it's a good idea. Again, all it is, is a land grab. I'm just glad a lot of you Wilkinsburg people are here, because the city of Pittsburgh, again, there's, the people talk about taxes. Well, we have a lot of taxes, a lot of taxes that people don't even know about. So again, this is just a land grab. Burgess, you know, he talks about, oh, yeah, he just said, well, I'm not voting for it, but yes, you did. Burgess, your time is coming. And, you know, because of the lawsuit I have against you. So your time is coming, is coming short. So of course, you know, you want to find a way to see how you can land grab. So that's all this is about. It's a land grab. It's a gentrification. It's not even about, it has nothing to do with taxes. It's all an agenda that the CDC have that's working closely with Burgess and a few other people on council. So again, like I said, is that this is, this is a land grab. We need to be, we need to worry about how we're going to solve these murders. This should be a meeting, we should have this kind of meeting about talking about, you know, what's going to happen, you know, how are you investigating, how are you going to stop crime? But we're here talking about trying to annex a municipality? It makes no sense. It just makes no sense. So again, Wilkinsburg, keep fighting, keep fighting. I'm going to fight with you.
We have Walt Crumble followed by Adrian Crummel. Walt, are you here?
Yeah, I keep hearing, hearing about what you're going to do. Get the streets cleaned up in Pittsburgh when it snows. That's the first thing. What happened over in Frick Park wasn't an accident. It was a catastrophe because you guys are not doing what you're supposed to be doing. So why would you want to do the same thing to Wilkinsburg? And Wilkinsburg is running smooth, baby. Okay? And as far as the properties go, people are buying those properties and fixing them up. On my street alone, we have four houses that were bought, and the people have reconditioned them and are selling them for twice as much as they bought them for. So that's a bunch of bull. And that's the reason why the tax, tax borough, you guys got all the wrong information. So best thing to do, take care of what you got now and fix up the people in Mount Oliver and all the other places where you're insufficient, before you even try getting Wilkinsburg. That's it for me.
Thank you. We have Adrian Crummel followed by Michelle Lee. Adrian, are you with us? Adrian, are you with us?
I see no Adrian.
We have Michelle Lee followed by Anthony Moreno. Michelle, are you here?
I'm with you.
Michelle, thank you. Mr. Moreno, you're our last registered speakers. After that, anyone else who wants to speak will just come to the mic in order, if you have not spoken, in order of your preference. Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, council, for having me today. My name's Tony Moreno. I ran for mayor. The reason I'm here is because there's a lot of things I found out about this particular action going on. I was asked to look into it. I was brought before a group of people, and I asked a lot of questions and found out a lot of answers, meaning Wilkinsburg's pretty solvent in their budget. We all thought going into this, Wilkinsburg is going under. That's why the city's going to take them. And when I learned what I learned and why Wilkinsburg was suffering, the very first thing I found out is because of their abandoned properties. This is how it works. Property goes abandoned. The tax company that they hired to gather those taxes go after the people. They haven't paid for 90 days, and once that happens, they just put it into default and they raise their hands to it. The answer to why they do that is because they are not in the real estate business. They just take the taxes, and it's up to Wilkinsburg to take care of the rest. So that falls on Wilkinsburg's school district. I don't know why, it just made up that way. And the school district says, we're into education. We're not in the real estate business. So they sit, and they rot, and nobody does anything. That's a problem. You're losing tax, you're losing population because people are being forced out, that were forced in from the city, and they can't afford to live there. Another problem that's happening that I found is people are coming into Wilkinsburg and buying 250,000, $84,000 homes for $250,000. Now, let's just stop talking about all these other actions that are happening. Let's just look and talk about the things that are very plainly in our face. If there's a home, when you go up and you look at that value, okay, well, there's a house, it's about $84,000. Tax is sent, I'm going to go in, and I'm going to buy that house at $84,000 or somewhere near there. How in the world did it jump up to 250? And now you know that. Why are you going and having a court hearing trying to reduce that tax number back down to $84,000? That's like saying, I'm going to buy a Lamborghini and say, you know what, this is valued at $122,000, but I went to auction and bought it for $300,000. But you know what? I'm not going to pay the tax for the $300,000. I'm only paying that tax. You know what they're going to say? Then you're not buying this vehicle. This is how it works. Why is this happening? It's what they did in the city of Pittsburgh. You come in and inflate the cost of housing, it drives everybody else that can't afford it. They live here because this is their community. This is where they came up. And all of a sudden, people are pricing them out. They're not building homes for people that are underprivileged. They're building apartment buildings, and they're moving out 100% of the people and offering 10% of them back. What about the other 90% of them? Well, that's coming. So let's look at the good and bad. How do you win in Wilkinsburg, and how do you win in the city of Pittsburgh? They need the population in Pittsburgh, and they need your property. In Wilkinsburg, you just need the ability to sell the abandoned properties, and you'll be able to live. You do not want to come into the city of Pittsburgh that has the worst school district in the state. Don't do it, Wilkinsburg. Fight that good fight. You're okay. Change your positions of leadership inside. Make yourself solvent. You watch yourself grow. You're going to take advantage of all the development coming into your community instead of spread out everywhere else. Do not trust them. They're lying to you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to speak, if you would please come to the microphone, just walk up, and there are, you can just either form a line, socially distancing, or just come up, please. Please start off with your name and address, that would help.
Brandi White Cloud, and I'm not a resident of Wilkinsburg. I used to live there for about 20-something years, but I have family members who still live there. My mom still lives there. She's been there for over 70-something years. And when I lived in Wilkinsburg, Wilkinsburg was a vibrant community. Everybody from the city used to come to Wilkinsburg. We used to have parades. Everybody loved Wilkinsburg. People wanted to bring their kids to Wilkinsburg. So it is a vibrant community. Every community has their ups and downs. Every school district is in default right now, just about in the whole county. So it's not just Wilkinsburg. It's all of Allegany County where these communities are failing. And so it's not like you have to go in and get them. What they need to do is find some of this COVID money that is out here. There's billions and billions of dollars of COVID money that is allocated to the state of Pennsylvania that Wilkinsburg needs to go and get to revitalize your community. You really don't need the help. You can partner with Wilkinsburg, I mean, with the city, and have your community services like the trash, and some of the kids go there. But there's tons of money that you can go after. I advise you guys to vote no. You revisit it once, you can't keep coming back to revisit it for 5% of the community. Like 95% of the other community is like a no. And I know people who are not here, and you know why? Because they're tired. They think it's happening. I got a postcard from this organization, what did it call, the CD, that came in the mail to me, that already has it mapped out what they're going to do to Wilkinsburg without the consent already. Yes, that in particular. And I'm like, you guys haven't even had a meeting. This is before the meeting. And so they're already banking on council to say, yes, go ahead, let's go ahead and do it. You know, because Wilkinsburg is not even worth the salt it's in. That community is growing. Every day I come, it's just like the city. When I come into the city and I see East Liberty, even though it's, you guys say it's gentrified, you can see the growth. I see growth where there wasn't growth. So there is small steps that are created down there. And give them a chance to keep moving in that direction. Yes, in the 80s, every community failed back in the day, but right now, they are on a growing spurt. Let them continue to grow in their own community. Wilkinsburg is a big community. It's not like Verona and Penn Hills. It's not a small section that you could just cut off from the neck and say, here. It's a big community. It borders where I live. It borders on the suburbs. So it's a lot of land that you're saying, hey, let's go ahead and see if we can do this. I would say vote no. Revisit it maybe 10 years from now with the help of the city, the Wilkinsburg residents. Let them have a voice in it. Right now, it doesn't seem like they have a voice, and that's why I'm here, because it doesn't seem like they have a voice. This organization that's located in there has already cut them off at the knees and said, hey, let's go ahead and let's do it. When I saw that postcard, I was like, wow, they got it already mapped up to April of next year on what they're going to do. So they're already putting it in the heads that they already have a plan in motion, and you guys are on board. And so with 5% of the community, that's very small amount of people and residents in the area to say, oh, yeah, let's go ahead and do it, without more research. And like I said, the more I come into Wilkinsburg, the more I see the growth, more businesses coming in, more houses, like you said, I used to work there, more stuff is there. So it might not be as big as you see it, but it's, it's getting there. So give them some time. So I would advise just, put it, put it to the, put it to the floor.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Brooke. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Brooke Burchett-Williams. I own a property in Pittsburgh at 320 Fort Kinneble Boulevard in downtown Pittsburgh. I also own a property in Churchill, which is next to Wilkinsburg. I graduated from Westinghouse High School, and in the great school years, I went to Turner Elementary. I've heard some comments about allowing the community to have a voice. And a part of the process is to have 5% of the community draft a petition, it go to the Court of Common Pleas, and then the community will vote. I think that there are probably less than 5% in this room representing the voice of Wilkinsburg. I think if you really want to have community engagement, you would allow it to be voted on. As far as some of these stats that were discussed around the Wilkinsburg School District, someone highlighted that 32% of the students show proficiency. That's horrible. That's horrible. That's nothing to celebrate. And so I think that to even use that stat, you know, to me, as an example as to why the larger community needs to be at the table and have a voice and have a vote on whether or not this annexation happens. You also talked about highlighting the graduation rates at Westinghouse High School. Yet, my understanding is that the enrollment levels were so low in Wilkinsburg High School that it made the most sense to that it made the most sense to merge the high school with Westinghouse. Talking about my own experience in the Wilkinsburg School District. I went to Turner Elementary. Someone highlighted that. While I was in Turner Elementary, grade second through fifth, the state came in and took over Wilkinsburg, over Turner Elementary, because the performance levels were horrible. So what I'm saying is that I ride through Wilkinsburg every day. I see a lot of abandoned properties. I see a lot of blight. And I see a lot of blight in Homewood, too. I grew up on 7336 Flori Way. Okay? And so when you talk about the city's ability to handle their own backyard, I think what we really need to discuss is that there needs to be a change in leadership. Don't allow what the councilman has done or not done dictate what can possibly happen for Wilkinsburg. Allegheny County right now has 130 municipalities. It's, that's absurd. The amount of money that we could be saving if we would think less about fragmentation and more about community engagement and participation on a larger scale would be beneficial to all of us.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers?
Hello. My name is Sabrina Gibson. I'm a newly elected council member in Wilkinsburg, Zone 2, as a matter of fact. When I ran for office, one of the things I said to everybody was, "I didn't have a decision on which way to go because I had to investigate it first." I'm a retired juvenile probation officer. Also worked at Schuman Center with Mr. Crum. I also worked with your brother in the juvenile department. But as I investigated it, just like you, Mr. Burgess, I didn't like the way that it came about. I don't like anybody to go sneaky, grabbing a petition, a 1903 law and enact it and go to our residents and not fully explain to them the fours and what fours of this petition. You said newly elected. We need some new leaders. I hope to be one of those new leaders. I'm not the only one that was newly elected. We have several that's newly elected. I remember sending the council president an email saying that I vote no. And like I said, the reasons for it is all of the things that you said, the tax base, they said homeowners' taxes will go down. Our taxes have already went down. From my understanding, it is the city, if we merge with the city, you guys already say you're raising your taxes. So what does that leave us? That leaves us with a new assessment and new taxes. I'm not for that. I don't like anything sneaky. When you go behind the back, to me, that's saying that it's something that you couldn't bring to council. Like I said, I'm newly elected, but I know that they didn't bring it to the council. You know, if it's such a good plan and you had it all mapped out, as you show on every time that I've heard, then why didn't you bring it to council? Before I even got on council, why was it? If this is such a good plan, it should have been presented to council. I don't like anything that goes behind the back and this is what it is. Bottom line, I'm not with the merger. I think that we're solid. We're, as a matter of fact, we're in the process of getting some of the houses down. As a matter of fact, some of the houses that fell down on Penn Avenue, they weren't even owned by the city of Wilkinsburg. Who owned them? Exactamundo. And they wanted to leave it up for a series of times. And we said, "No, come and take that down because we have residents walking up and down that street every day." So guess what? They're down now. We're not paying for your stuff to be taken down when we already have our abandoned buildings that we're trying to bring down on our own. So bottom line, I'm not for it. And I hope all our residents in Wilkinsburg get on board and let's do what we have to do because the tiger still roars in Wilkinsburg.
Hello. I'm Natasha Washington. I live at 601 West Street in Wilkinsburg. I grew up in Wilkinsburg all my life, from the time I was born till now. And I wanted to talk about something that I didn't hear enough about in this conversation, which is unfortunately, the racism and classism that is in my community. I'm not saying that to be radical. I'm not saying it for shock value. I'm saying it because it's a reality of this situation. We have people that don't represent us that are making decisions for us. My mother was on school board for 28 years. And while she was on school board, it used to be very diverse. It was more focused on the children. Since then, it has become not as diverse and the people that are on it don't even have children that are in our school district, yet they are making decisions for us because most of them want to lower the school tax that we have. I believe that the WCDC is trying to do the same thing with property tax. My community is mostly African-American. It's mostly moderate to low income and it's mostly renters. So property tax doesn't really help majority of our community. And the people that I see representing the CDC happen to not be my community and happens to be those select few that also want the school taxes to be down. I read those plans and I read those documents and it was more about redevelopment than what was actually going to happen to my community. When they did make a community plan with this WCDC, majority of the goals that they put on those plans were not fulfilled. And they still haven't been fulfilled. And they get the NPP money to do that and that work has not been done. So it shows you that the WCDC is not really representative of us. Even with the mailer that I got, there was not like a mailer that said, "Come to a meeting to learn more about what's happening with this annexation." It was just, "This petition is going to be signed and then we're going to be annexed when everybody who came to these meetings asks for community engagement." And that was not given to us. This is the only community engagement that we've had and it's not our CDC. It's not the people within our community that's saying, "Hey, residents, come." It is you all who are technically not our representatives. And I went out canvassing for my campaigning. I knocked on a lot of doors and talked to a lot of residents and none of them even one knew that they were going to have a new House Representative. But a lot of them didn't even know that the annexation was happening, what it even meant. And it left a lot of people scared because they are renters and the only thing that they get in the mail is saying that, "Oh, property tax will go up and we'll have all these benefits." But nobody knows what that means and nobody knows who to talk to because we haven't seen the CDC. They don't knock on our doors. They don't come talk to us. So we're like, "Who do we talk to? Who do we come to?" Which is why we are coming to these meetings to tell you that we understand, like this is the information that you have and was given, but it is not representative of what we need and what we want in our community. And I hope you make community engagement mandatory for this process before there's an actual vote on it because that is severely needed in our community. And I don't think any plan should move forward without the community knowing what's going on because it will severely affect them. Any development that happens and property taxes changing and the value of our properties changing will affect our renters. And we do not want displacement in our community. So I ask you all to really take a real serious look at community engagement and all the comments that you heard because the CDC is not giving you all the information to the community. And it's very unfortunate, but it's a very real situation. So thank you for listening.
Any other speakers? Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will now turn it over to members of council. After the members who are here give their comments, I'll give some including comments and answer some of the questions that I heard during public comment and talk about next steps. And we'll start with the President of Council, President Teresa Kelsmith.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, especially the holiday weekend. So I appreciate everyone being here. And I appreciate everyone being here and I appreciate every... So the mic doesn't work. It's for sound only for recording. So I'll talk really loud. So thank you, everyone, for being here. I appreciate you all being here. I appreciate that you came tonight, the night before a holiday weekend. So, and I want to thank our Clerk's Office and all the officers that have been here tonight. They have been doing a great job and especially our IMP, who covers all the recordings for being here. Because they've been keeping a really difficult schedule during this process. So I want to thank them for their work. But I want to thank you all for being here. I heard your comments about the Finance Director and I would like to speak with them, please. And I just want to be clear, really, with the process that we went through initially, it was me who put the process together to look how we might annex any other place in Allegheny County. And I did that because I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to ever go down the road we just went down with Wilkinsburg, where people felt so pushed out and so locked out of the process. I think that honestly, I think we love Wilkinsburg and I think Wilkinsburg and Pittsburgh have a good relationship together. I think it has been the process. I think the process is flawed. I think it made people feel as if somebody was coming in and forcing something on them. We don't have a lot of facts. We have people manipulating facts. And I think that is making people feel very uncomfortable. And I think honestly, if we had an honest conversation and we talked about some of this, maybe all of us would be okay with it. But I think it's the process. And so I'm hoping that council follows the process that we tried to put in place and that council members do their due diligence and look into each of their committees, which we've asked them to do in the process, is to tell us what their committees are doing and what the effect would be from personnel projects, DPW projects, including snow removal, what that means for the city of Pittsburgh. But you brought up a lot of valid points about property and housing and it is a concern for my side of town. And, which is also, I think, is a concern for Councilman Kraus. He's made that very clear, is that we don't see the investment that the East End is seeing on our side of town. And we do have a lot of vacant and blighted properties on our side of town. So what happens to those properties is everything keeps pushing to the East End. So it's a concern for us and it's something we are watching and something that we are But I think that the bottom line here is, you mentioned that it might fail on the ballot if people vote. That's your responsibility. Make sure people get out to vote. So I'm just saying, so if that's, if that's the case, then it's over. So I just want to be very clear about this. So if that's really what residents want, then they need to come out and vote. Whatever they need, whatever they want, they need to come out for. But I will ask for council members to give us a briefing and an update on where they are with this process so that we can hear that the due diligence is being done, that Finance Director, the Finance Director is being, that he has had an opportunity to share his numbers and information, that we have had people doing their due diligence with their committees. So I will make sure that we ask for that briefing. I am one of the people that, as much as I love Wilkinsburg, I'm concerned about this whole process and I'm concerned about the outcome because I worry about what it means for my side of town. And I mean selfishly, but that's what I was elected to do. So that's what I was elected to do. So I'm just going to be honest. So I have a lot of concern about it. I did appoint people to serve on that and Councilman Lavelle was the chairperson. And so we'll talk to him about the process and where we are with that during a briefing. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Well, first, I want to thank everyone for attending this evening, for taking time out of your schedules again and again and for testifying. And I too heard what you said. I heard the points that you made. A couple of points, just to follow up on what Council President said, is that, you know, I also voted no the last time we voted. I have concerns. And mostly, my concerns were about the amount of information that we had, which is why I believe, although I don't sit on it, the committee that is investigating this, that is doing, is actually commissioning further research so we can get the numbers that we are seeking that are incomplete from the report that we've received already. So I'm awaiting those numbers. I also had concerns with the process. We can't change the process as it's stated in the annexation law of the early 1900s. I wish we could, but as a second-class city in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we have to follow a process. It's stipulated by that law, which is that Pittsburgh City Council gets some sort of a say and the people of Wilkinsburg get a say, but the Wilkinsburg City Council does not get a vote and the people of Pittsburgh do not get a vote directly on this. That said, I am imploring the, you know, the committee that is working on this, is it a committee or a task force? It's a, I believe it's a task force. So I called it a committee, but I believe it's a task force working on this to treat it like it is a merger-like process. Not to say that we're, this is a foregone conclusion, but that it, that we as council engage with the Wilkinsburg City Council, that we engage with the Pittsburgh School Board, that we engage with the Wilkinsburg School Board. And that, you know, as Wilkinsburg is hopefully doing its due diligence of knocking on doors and talking to people about your thoughts on this, that, that as we proceed in this process, that we have as many Pittsburgh residents showing up to these hearings as we have Wilkinsburg residents. Because I appreciate all of you being here. I also want to hear from Pittsburgh residents who I think are uninformed, largely uninformed about this process and that it's, that we're exploring it again. So that's, that's work for us to do on city council, for sure. So I just, I hear what you're saying about community engagement. I hear what you're saying about needing more information and more numbers and more facts. And I too am awaiting that. So I'll reserve judgment on this whole issue until we go through this process and learn more. Thank you all.
So I'm at the stage of my life and in my career where I'm just very grateful. I'm grateful that I've, I look across the street at the grade school I went to, around the corner from the house I grew up in. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm very grateful that I've had a chance to serve. I am less concerned about my future. I am more concerned about the future of my children and my children's children and the future of the communities in which I serve. And so my positions, as I move forward, are really not based on political outcome. I am first and foremost the pastor of the Nazarene Baptist Church across the street from this place. And so I am going to, as much as I can, try to follow what's, the rule that I've lived by, which is, you know, to love neighbor as self. And what you do to the least of these, you do it unto me. And so I say that to say that I'm really appreciate you coming out. I appreciate the diversity of positions and I want to hear from all of you. So a woman asked me specifically, you know, what would happen? What's the good thing? And to distill it down to one thing, and not saying this is right or the reason you should make a decision. But I will say the one, the most striking thing that will happen, you asked me specifically, I'll answer that question specifically. The question they asked me was, what would Pittsburgh offer Wilkinsburg if there was a merger? And I want to answer that question directly for you. What would happen overnight is that all of your property would be worth more, instantaneously overnight. Every single property in Pittsburgh, in Wilkinsburg overnight would be significantly worth more. The reason it would be worth more is because your property taxes would be cut in half. That, when you buy a house, you don't just buy the house on what it is worth. You buy the house based on what it is worth and what you will pay in taxes, right? Your mortgage is a combination of what you, the loan you take off from the house, right? And the amount you pay in taxes. Therefore, when you take out, you know, if you take out $100, right? That gets you so much house and then you have to pay the taxes on that $100. Well, overnight, that same $100, you will be able to buy a significantly bigger house in Wilkinsburg overnight with that same $100. And so the property rates of every property owner overnight, and this is indisputable, it's not personal. So that's a fact, that overnight, because of the decrease in property taxes, every property in Wilkinsburg will be worth more money. That's just, that's what, that's, that's the biggest and most significant, and the reason really probably the CDC is pushing it, that is the most dramatic difference that would happen to Wilkinsburg. Number two. So that's, that's, you answered, so you asked me, I want to answer that question, right? All right. So let me tell you about our process. There are four council members who are part of this task force. Those four council members are Councilwoman Deb Gross, Councilman Anthony Cockhill, Councilman Lavelle, the chair, and myself. We've also reached out to the Mayor of Wilkinsburg and to the Council of Wilkinsburg. The Council of Wilkinsburg sent us a letter saying they are going to send us two council people. We've not yet received who those two council people are to work on our task force. They are certainly welcome. There's no secrets here. Everything we're doing is, is public. So they can, they can, they can send us, the president, we're waiting for the president of their council to send us their two members. The other thing that we will do now is we will The other thing that we will do now is we will have at least, we have one more meeting, I believe, scheduled for Pittsburgh. Then, we have asked the President, the Mayor of Wilkinsburg to host. We can go into Wilkinsburg. We have to be invited in. We're sort of like, in terms of, yeah, I was going to say in terms of, if you're, like I am, a fiction reader, right? In terms of vampires. Vampires, you know, can't come into a house unless they're invited in. And so, we're sort of, although I don't know if that's the right analogy, right? But, we cannot come into Wilkinsburg unless we are, and I am, I am, I don't say this publicly, I'm an Anne Rice fan and she was the writer of perhaps 30 books on vampires. I'm a great, I've read all her books. So, I'm a great Anne Rice fiction reader. So, the President of Wilkinsburg, the Mayor of Wilkinsburg, rather, has said he will invite us in. If invited in, we will do exactly what you heard us do today, right? Now, the last thing is this. This document I read is not our document. It was a document that we're using simply to set the table. Council itself is preparing its own document. Every member of council has a committee. Each member of council is preparing our, our, our investigation of the impact of annexation would have on the city. Those separate committees will come into one document. This is not our document, although in probably the next three or four months, we will produce a document that's council's analysis of the merger. That's why we're having these meetings as part of our analysis. And so, probably, we've been given six months to do this task. And so, we have a few more months to go. And then, we will produce a document. Now, once we produce the document, in terms of us being active, that will stop our active portion. We won't do anything else. If nothing comes before us, you won't hear from us at all talking about Wilkinsburg. Only if the judge, and you have 5% of your residents ask for annexation, that will then trigger us. If the judge demand decides those are valid signatures, then and only then, will we get back engaged. And the President has laid out this structure, this vehicle of investigation, any new municipality that comes to us in annexation. And the only way, and the last thing I will say to you, because we've done, I've heard, there's been lots of, even we didn't understand, because we're a second-class city, we have no other vehicle to merge with Wilkinsburg other than annexation. We cannot. The state does not allow us. We could only merge with another second-class city and there are no other second-class cities in the state. So, we could not merge with Wilkinsburg. We're, we're not allowed to. The only vehicle that is permissible under state law for us, we can merge as we've done fire, we can public works. But, the only true way we can't merge is this annexation law, which is an ancient law that was actually used for the North Side. That's how the North Side became part of the city of Pittsburgh. Allegheny City was annexed into the city of Pittsburgh. After that happened, they changed the law. They changed the, because in that, in that, in that, in that vote, both municipalities voted. And what happened was, the two votes were put together and they had more residents in Pittsburgh. And, and so, they changed it. They wanted to make sure, the state went to make sure that no other municipality could be annexed against their will, which is why the bigger municipality doesn't get the vote. To make sure, to ensure that the, that the annex, that the smaller municipality cannot be annexed against their will, the, the law was changed to make sure. So, the only way annexation happens, at the end of the day, the only way it happens is if the majority of voters of Wilkinsburg vote yes. That will not be my decision, regardless of how I vote on council, that will not be my decision. That will be your neighbors and your friends. Now, so that's, but so we will have one more meeting in the city. We hope to have, again, the Mayor of Wilkinsburg said he will invite us and we've been coordinating with him. We, we hope to coordinate two meetings in Wilkinsburg, where again, bring all your friends. We want to hear you. We would then, we would then issue our report, probably around September, end of August, September, something like that. Once we finish our report, we will stop. There'll be no other action from council. Our action now is to listen to you, file our report, stop. The only way we become back engaged is if there is a court action. If the voters of Wilkinsburg filed a petition, it goes to a judge, the judge says that they are valid, and then he sends us a decree demanding that we take action. Then and only then, will we act. And so, the, and, and the last thing, this is just my advice, this is on a personal, this is Ricky Burgess now. I have said this privately, publicly to anyone who listen. If I was a member of Wilkinsburg, if I lived, and my brother, everybody knows my brother lives in Wilkinsburg. He looks just like me, right? Sounds like me, looks like, my brother looks exactly like me. And he's been a member, he's been living in Wilkinsburg, you know, he's been living in Wilkinsburg close to 40 years. And here's what I tell anyone who will listen. I would not spend my energy and time trying to convince members of City Council. We're going to make our decision, but our decision is going to be internal, really. We're going to come together and huddle and as elected officials, we're going to decide what we think is best for the city. If I were you and I was a Wilkinsburg person, either for this or against this, I would spend 99% of my time trying